All right, it is 7:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council Calendar item listed on the front page of MissionKS.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, please call the roll.
Here.
Here.
Loudon.
Here.
Fire.
Here.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Kepner Davis.
Here.
Tracy.
Here.
I do have one quick comment tonight before we jump into the rest of our agenda. So I just wanted to reflect a minute on the pledge, actually. So when we become elected officials, we swear an oath to uphold the Constitution. In every council meeting, we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. But that can feel kind of rote because most of us here have probably been reciting the pledge since elementary school. So I just wanted to stop for a moment and focus on the promise that we've made and the principles that we are undertaking to uphold when we say the pledge, which is liberty and justice for all. Borrowing from Langston Hughes's poem, "Let America Be America Again," it is we, the people, who must redeem our country and make it that great, strong land of love. We are facing a constitutional crisis, and I would ask if you are so inclined to join me in a moment of quiet reflection, to think about those like Mr. Obrego Garcia, who are being denied liberty and justice without due process, and our responsibility to advocate for the rule of law as elected officials. Thank you, everybody. We do not have any public hearings this evening, therefore, we will move into our special presentations. We have three special presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation recognizing Arbor Day 2025 in the City of Mission. This year, Arbor Day will be celebrated on Friday, April 25th. I'd like to present our proclamation to Penn Almone and our Parks, Recreation and Tree Commission and ask Penn to give us an update on our Arbor Day activities. Penn, come on up. I think we've got Jackie from the commission. I was trying to see with any other commission members?
Katie Anderson's here.
Oh, yes. Hiding. There we go.
Yes, we're well represented this evening. Thank you, Mayor. That's very exciting to be recognized for this. So upcoming Arbor Day activities, we've got a annual celebration with our second graders that will be happening on Tuesday, April 29th at 11:30 AM. And we typically highlight the importance of tree canopies. We invite a poster contest winners to interact, and those are fifth graders interacting with second graders, and so we build some kind of synergy within Rushton Elementary's halls and celebrate the importance of trees and what they offer us. Give away, we've given away quarters. What's the Connecticut Charter Oak Quarter in the past? We've given away apples. They create little medallions that they get to hang on trees. And this year, we'll actually be in a park at Waterworks again, so it's pretty exciting. But thank you.
Great. Thank you. Our second presentation is related. We have recognition of the Arbor Day Poster Contest winner from Rushton Elementary School. Penn, I think this is you again, and Jackie Gameson, will you please come forward for your presentation?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. So as many of you are aware, we've been a Tree City USA community for the last 23 years, which with that designation has a series of commitments aligned with it. One of those is to continue to educate our students and citizens about the importance of trees and how they can build upon the strength of a tree canopy. And so this evening, we'd like to recognize the efforts of a young student and their artistic abilities. And I've got Jackie Gameson, who's a longtime resident and a charter member of our Parks, Recreation and Tree Board before recreation is involved. So Jackie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to honor a young resident in Mission, who's brought some real special fame and recognition to our city through the partnership that the Mission Parks, Rec and Tree Commission had with the Kansas Forest Service when we did the Arbor Day Poster Contest. I'd like to have our special winner and her mother, Jessica. This is Cora Carlson, the council, and her mother, Jessica. And our Mission's first place poster winner. Congratulations, Cora. And Cora was representing her fifth grade class at Rushton. And when she did this, it was really a great opportunity for us to put the posters on display at the Powell Center. So we did that in early February, and I have to say that I've got to congratulate Cora because she got 25% of the 101 votes that were cast over that weekend. Now, that made her Mission's first place poster winner. Well, Mission Parks, Rec and Tree Commission decided that this definitely has to be submitted for state recognition. So we sent that first place poster off to the Kansas Forest Service at Kansas State University in Manhattan. And Cora's poster joined 800-plus fifth grade students throughout the state of Kansas to be judged by the Forest Service and recognized in their communities and all over the state and acknowledged by the governor of the state of Kansas. Well, Cora's poster received the Northeast Kansas Regional Award. And so she is a second winner. And I have to say thank you to Cora because not only did you do a great poster, and that great poster right now is hanging in the signboard over at Broadmoor Park, if you're interested in visiting that poster. And soon, it will be hanging in the South Hallway at the Powell Center for your long time viewing enjoyment. So we hope that you will visit the poster there. But in the meantime, Cora gifted the City of Mission with a tree that was planted on the Rushton Elementary School site. All of her fifth grade classmates got to take home a lilac bush to plant. And the teachers, the fifth grade teachers, received tree books. That was Ms. Graham and Ms. Thomas, right? That are the fifth grade teachers. And then Ms. Olber, the art teacher, received a large bag of art supplies to share with all of our developing artists at the Rushton Elementary School. So this brought a lot of recognition to Mission, and we are really proud of her. And Katie, would you come up to join us? Because we'd like to take a little photo opportunity here before we have Cora have an opportunity to meet our council and mayor, okay?
You want to give some checks?
Congratulations, and I love the lilac bush.
It's so nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Good job.
Good job. Do you want to give a sentence?
And we have so much great art that Jackie, I think you forgot to mention one more piece, which is, is there another piece with the regional winners that you want?
There is a large piece of the regional winners that is on display over in the new sign case at Rushton.
You're up at Rushton.
And I might just add that we have another piece that has been lost since 2018. We had a state winner in 2018, and that framed poster somehow disappeared during some renovations when it was either on display at City Hall or the Powell Center or for some other event. But I've restored the art that was produced in that off of a photograph, and that is also going to be hanging over at the Powell Center.
Very cool.
So we'll have an array in our Hall of Honor for our Arbor Day awards.
Awesome. Congratulations again to Cora and all of our winners, and a huge thank you to all of our students who entered the contest this year and Rushton staff who supported their efforts, and of course, our Parks, Recreation and Tree Board who supported their efforts. And we enjoy partnering every year for Arbor Day activities. Our final proclamation tonight designates April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in an effort to bring awareness that children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn and grow. It is critical that we come together as partners, that the voices of our children are heard by all, and that as a community, we are extending a helping hand to children and families in need. We thank the many child advocates, including teachers, nurses and social workers that work tirelessly every day, helping children and ensuring their bright and healthy futures. We do not have any items related to the issuance of notes and bonds this evening, so we will move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of seven items tonight. Our council committee is met on March 5th and fully discussed each of these items. The committee has agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or a member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move the City Council adopt the consent agenda as printed, items 4A through 4E.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Kepner Davis.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Edin Chumposi.
Aye.
Mont.
Aye.
Ms. Kerry.
All right, next, we move into public comments. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on an item not included on our agenda tonight, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we'll call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember, your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you're a part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated, and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also, be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Do we have any comments online just then? Seeing none, any comments in person? Seeing none, we will move into our planning action items. First up from the Planning Commission, we do have one item coming forward from the Planning Commission tonight for consideration of a combined revised preliminary and final development plan, Phase Two of the Lanes at Mission Bowl in the 5300 block of Martway Street. Brian, will you please provide your report?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So this was case 2504, Combined Revised Preliminary and Final Development Plan. It was heard by the Planning Commission at their March 4th, 2025 meeting. And there was a public hearing at that time, taking public testimony on the case. The case pertains to a development of Phase Two of the Lanes, which is at 5399 Martway Street. And we have in this first aerial photograph, you can see on the left is the actual Phase One of the Lanes development. So that's now complete. That's at 5399 Martway Street. The developer, Sunflower Development Group, has been interested in doing a Phase Two immediately to the east on that parking lot. So that's the property that's outlined in blue with the small X on it. They presented a, and that's another kind of site plan of the two buildings together on Martway. They had presented a preliminary development plan to the city in July of 2023 that was heard by the Planning Commission and recommended for approval, then ultimately approved by the City Council at that time. Since then, they have been working towards the actual purchase of the parking lot from the Brain Group that owns the bank building on the north side of Martway. So the two properties kind of work together. So the bank property on the north side of Martway is actually underparked right now, given the size of the building and the required number of parking. So that south parking lot on the south side of Martway has always served as an overflow parking lot. But anybody that's familiar with that area knows that it's rarely ever used for that purpose. It's mostly vacant at the time. Most days of the week, it's vacant. There's just a handful of parked cars on there, and you kind of assume it's probably for people are using the transit center. So. We want to go to the next slide. When the original preliminary development plan was approved in July of 2023, the Sunflower Development Group had proposed seven onsite parking spaces on Martway, off-street parking on Martway, excuse me. And so that was primarily for the tenant space that was going to be located at the northeast, northwest corner of the building. It's about 1,700 square foot tenant space there. And then the rest of the space along the front of the building would be a continuation of the Rock Creek Trail, that kind of curvilinear design and landscaping, as was done in Phase One of the project. Next slide, please. They are now proposing 15 additional parking spaces for a total of 22 onsite parking spaces along Martway in front of the building. So as you can see, a lot of that landscaping that was in front of the building has been taken away, and that's what triggered them having to go back through for a revised preliminary development plan, because they had more than 5% of their landscaping reduced. In the final, other than the change in the parking, there's really no other changes to the building itself from what was approved in July of 2023. So it's still the same height. It's obviously parking on the ground level, kind of podium structure with four stories of residential construction above. It's the same number of units, same number of parking spaces that were originally provided onsite, which I believe was 122. 120, excuse me, onsite spaces. So there's no other changes. They are proposing, go to the next site, slide, please. That's another view of the same building. Go to the next one. They're proposing some landscaping boxes, kind of planter-type boxes along the front of the building, as well as some park benches. That'll kind of help to break up the facade of the building a little bit, that podium parking that's there right now, or will be there when the building's complete. And then the final slide. And then they're also proposing a crosswalk kind of at the northwest corner of the building that will connect to the Transit Center. So that's, that's the crosswalk there. So that's really all I have for testimony. Open for questions, and I believe there's a representative from the Development Group that's here as well.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? I see one hand, if you want to come up and state your name and city of residence for the record. And again, public comments are three minutes.
Nora Moore, Mission. Actually, I don't have comments. I have just a couple of questions. My first question, when you talked about 22 parking places on the Martway Street, to my knowledge, there aren't any parking places right off of Martway right now. Is that correct? So how are these going to be parallel parking? Or how does that work?
The developer's proposing a total of 22 onsite parking spaces on Martway, and there'll be diagonal parking, similar to what's on Johnson Drive right now.
Okay. So will the street be indented somewhat then in front of the new building?
Correct, yeah. So the width of, the existing width of the street will remain, and then the parking spaces will be, yeah, basically indented into the property, if you will.
And are they public parking places? Are they, or are they for the residents?
It's intended to be public parking.
Okay.
So, yeah, anybody can use it.
And at the end of the building, down by where Wendy's sits right now?
Right.
I'm assuming Wendy's building disappears?
No, Wendy's will remain, yeah. So the proposed development is just on that parking lot that's immediately east to the apartment building that's just been completed. And then there's a kind of small parking lot to the east of that one. That's actually owned by the city, and that's for the Transit Center, public parking for the Transit Center. And then there's the Wendy's lot.
And does the same company own the Wendy's lot?
No.
So the Wendy's is for sale?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is standalone as, I'm sure it's chartered as a business? A business would move into there? I'm not necessarily asking you, or maybe the city. Is that what?
Yeah, that.
That would be planned for?
Probably the intent, yes, yeah. It's owned by Wendy's Corporation, and they're looking to sell the property. So most likely, it would be similar type of restaurant or something that would move into that business, that building.
Rumor on the street is that, is that your corporation wants to purchase that as well? I don't know if.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Scott is not a corporation. He's our city community development director.
I'm sorry.
But the, but the application that he was presenting, just to be clear, right? That's what you're saying is that the applicant for Phase Two is who is rumored to be?
Yes, interested in purchasing.
And I have a copy of the layout of that that I'm happy to share with you if you want to see how the parking interacts with the street.
And then, Robin, was that the end of our three minutes? Yeah.
Thank you very much.
For that. And Brian, just to clarify, the original approved plan did have 15 spaces, correct, planned for the on-street, and this is just increasing to 22?
The original plan that was approved had seven.
Oh, sorry, seven, and then now increasing.
The revised plans before tonight has 15 additional parking spaces for 22.
Thank you. And then, do we have any council comments or questions?
Yep. When, when, on the proposal, I thought that they said they were not going to mark the spaces. Am I wrong in that, that they did not, they were not going to demarcate the parking spaces? I thought I saw that in the proposal. Is that correct?
Yeah, you've got, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. Banks, Floodman, the Sunflower Development Group, sorry I couldn't be there tonight. There, you are correct, the new 15 spaces would not be marked. What, what may will be general public? What I would anticipate is if you notice on, on the Phase Two parcel, there is a retail component. If I was that retail use, I would probably put in my lease that I would like one or two spaces in front for people utilizing my retail space. And so there probably would be a couple reserved spaces in front that may be for that retail, but none of these spaces, additional spaces, they would all be general public. And, and the reason we added these spaces is it was frankly a requirement to purchase the site from the Brains because they want to make sure that they have additional parking in the area that suffices to their leases and some of the parking spaces that may or may not be needed. As Brian alluded to, that the parking lot's not utilized a whole lot currently. And so this was a solution that they felt was reasonable and allowed us to continue with the purchase of the contract. So that's just a little bit of history on it as well.
Thank you, Banks.
You're welcome.
I saw Debbie, and then Ben.
The question, could you remind me, based on X amount of parking spaces, what is the dedicated requirement for handicap accessibility?
It's one for 20 parking spaces, and they do meet that requirement.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, Mr. Scott or Mr. Floodman, just curious how the trail and the parking spaces will be handled in terms of like easement or dedication? Are we, which way are we expecting to handle those?
They have, the developer has not submitted a plat yet to the city, but we will be requesting when they do that they dedicate the trail and the parking as public.
Okay.
And that will have to be something that's approved by you all as part of the dedication.
Okay, yeah, I could see that being trouble if the parking spaces were dedicated and they never tried to lease them to retail tenant. That's why I asked.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I would now entertain a motion on the Combined Revised Preliminary and Final Development Plan for Phase Two of the Lanes at Mission Bowl, 5300 block of Martway.
Mayor, I move the City Council authorize, accept and report issuance required for June 20th. Sorry, sorry. I don't think we have a.
Sorry about that.
Let me find the cover page and I'll whip it up.
Sorry about that.
Mayor, I move the City Council approve the ordinance adopting a revised preliminary development plan. That's all we have in the cover sheet. Are we doing final at the same time?
Just revised.
Okay. Approve the ordinance adopting a revised preliminary development plan for Phase Two of the Lanes at Mission Bowl with previously approved stipulations and conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Kepner Davis.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Fred.
Aye.
Fire.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Edin Chumposi.
Aye.
All right, we will now move into our committee reports. Councilmember Schmidt, will you please provide a report from the Finance Administration Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. I will. The Finance and Administration Committee met on April 2nd and considered eight items. The meeting minutes, personal policies and personnel policies and guidelines, and surplus declaration were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. The master capital improvement program, resolution to set sail for the 2025 A-Gobonds, resolution calling a public hearing on a CID petition for 5101 Johnson Drive, resolution calling a public hearing on the Division of Rock Creek Development District 3B, and a TIF redevelopment project plan for 5101 Johnson Drive and Police Department vehicle and equipment purchase will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Our first item was the master capital improvement plan. Many public improvements such as streets, stormwater and public buildings may be financed through the issuance of general obligation bonds without the need for a public vote. Other improvements such as streetlights or park improvements are either not directly covered by state statute or in the absence of a charter ordinance and an approved capital master plan would require a public vote to finance with general obligation bonds. In June 2021, the City Council approved Charter Ordinance 32, exempting the City of Mission from the provisions of KSA 14-570 and KSA 14-571, and providing alternate provisions authorizing the city to issue general obligation bonds for public improvements without need for a public vote, when the bonds are in an amount sufficient to carry out a master plan for public improvements that has been approved by the governing body. It is important to note that broadening the scope through the charter ordinance did not reduce public accountability or transparency and does not give any council blanket authority to issue general obligation bonds for any purpose or project. The city is now ready to finance certain street improvements, stormwater improvements that have been contemplated for several years, as well as financing for new frontline police vehicles. The master plan must be approved by the governing body prior to issuance of any debt. All other requirements imposed on cities related to issuance of debt still apply when considering items to be financed under this charter ordinance. If approved, staff will work with our financial advisor and bond counsel to prepare the remaining required items necessary to proceed with a bond sale at the May 21st, 2025 City Council meeting. Mayor, I move the City Council adopt the resolution approving the capital improvement master plan for the City of Mission and communicating the city's expectations to finance certain costs for street improvements, stormwater improvements and police department vehicles in the maximum amount of $10 million plus capitalized interest. stormwater improvements and police department vehicles in the maximum amount of ten million dollars plus capitalized interest, interest on any temporary financing and cost of issuance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comments related to this item? Seeing none, any council comments and discussion? Laura, did you have a comment?
I I did. I, uh, just for the benefit of the public, um, we are not, we we have structured the debt issue so that we will be financing the police vehicles over a four-year term. Uh, the infrastructure improvements over a ten-year term. And so that that allows us to save on interest rates that we would typically do a standalone lease purchase for those police vehicles. But we are shortening the term so that it it's not feasible or responsible for us to finance those or a ten-year horizon. So those, that term is shorter.
Any other comments? Yeah, Leah?
Um, I just want to say that, you know, one of the things that this council has been really focused on is street improvements. And I think that we have been doing a great job of of doing the streets in a very thoughtful process, making sure that we're getting the worst ones first. And it's it's always painful for the residents as the the, uh, street improvements happen. But I think that our staff does a great job of communicating with residents what the expectations are and how things are going. Um, and so although, you know, no one ever likes to take on more debt, I think that, um, you know, our communities have has let us know that this is a priority for them. And you can certainly tell the difference when you drive in other cities. So I'm excited to, uh, continue the process of making sure that we've got great streets and and fewer bent axles and flat tires.
Yeah, Debbie?
I would also say we have a phenomenal sustainability commission that looks at all types of activities, one of which would be new technologies in the the development or sustainable road condition metric, if you will. As we get new types of roads, and Brent can probably attest, as we get later down the road on an environmental front, we kind of need to look at what is more sustainable and long-lasting on material level. So I would ask that we continue to look at those materials, uh, whether it be chip and seal, whatever it is. We've gained, uh, insight, I think, over the years in putting down the best placed materials for the roads that we're currently, you know, monitoring. And I just ask that we continue to look for that. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Ryder?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Perpinder Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our next item is the Set Sale Resolution twenty-twenty-five A General Obligation Bonds. Uh, this resolution signals the city's intent to take the general obligation bonds, series twenty-twenty-five A, to the market on May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The anticipated debt service schedule for this issue was prepared by Ellers, Inc. The resolution has been prepared by the city's bond counsel, Gilmore and Bell. The proposed issue includes financing to make improvements to both street and stormwater infrastructure assets, as well as providing for the purchase of five frontline police vehicles. Debt service on these bonds is anticipated to be paid from dedicated revenues from property tax, street sales tax, and stormwater utility fee revenues. The city will request a new rating on these bonds from Standard and Poor's, and in order to obtain the lowest interest cost, the city will solicit competitive bids. The Set Sale Resolution does not commit the city to the financing and is used to authorize staff, our financial advisor, and our bond counsel to proceed with preparing the offering documents. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, series twenty-twenty-five A of the city of Mission, Kansas.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Perpinder Davis?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, item seven C, the resolution calling public hearing on CID petition for fifty-one oh one Johnson Drive. Mission one oh one LLC has submitted a community improvement district, or CID, petition associated with proposed upgrades to the property located at fifty-one oh one Johnson Drive, which is the former former Wild Oats property. The petition seeks to levy an additional two percent retailer's sales tax effective October first, twenty-twenty-five for a period of twenty-two years. State statute requires that the city pass a resolution giving notice of the intent to consider the petition and setting the date and time for a public hearing. The resolution before the council tonight would officially set the public hearing on this request for the regularly scheduled city council meeting on Wednesday, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five at seven o'clock PM at Mission City Hall, sixty-ninety Woodson Street, Mission, Kansas, six-six-two-zero-two. The resolution does not commit the city council to any action except rescheduling, except scheduling the public hearing and providing the required notice. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution setting the date and time for a public hearing to consider the petition for the fifty-one oh one Johnson Drive Community Improvement District for seven o'clock PM on Wednesday, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five at Mission City Hall, sixty-ninety Woodson Street, Mission, Kansas, six-six-two-zero-two.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, do we have any council comment or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Perpinder Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item seventeen, the resolution calling public hearing on the Division of Rock Creek Redevelopment District Three B and a TIF redevelopment project plan for fifty-one oh one Johnson Drive. Mission one oh one LLC has submitted an application for consideration of a tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for fifty-one oh one Johnson Drive. The only item for council consideration at this time is a resolution whose sole purpose is to set a public hearing for the May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting. Approval of any incentives would not be considered until the public hearing has been conducted, and the council has reviewed and analyzed information from the city's financial advisor, bond counsel, and staff. In accordance with state statutes, the council may not call the public hearing until after the planning commission has found the TIF redevelopment project plan in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The planning commission did review the redevelopment project plan at their March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five meeting and found the plan to be in conformance with the Tomorrow Together twenty-forty Mission Comprehensive Plan. Planning Commission Resolution twenty-five dash oh-two conferring this conformance is included in the packet. The resolution does not commit the city council to any action except scheduling the public hearing and providing the required notice. Mayor, I move the city council adopt the resolution setting a public hearing for seven o'clock PM, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five to consider the Division of Rock Creek Redevelopment District Three B and a tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for fifty-one oh one Johnson Drive.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comment or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
Perpinder Davis?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item seven E, the police department vehicle and equipment purchase. On February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, a mission police vehicle was struck by another vehicle on I thirty-five while assisting on a traffic stop. The vehicle was deemed a total loss by the city's insurer with an appraised value of seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents. The city is set to receive a total of twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents after paying its five thousand dollar deductible. The city's insurer has begun the subrogation demand process to the offender's vehicle insurance, which would recoup the deductible amount and possibly additional related equipment costs. The cost for the twenty-twenty-five Ford Interceptor on contract pricing is forty-seven thousand four hundred and six dollars. The cost of the equipment and installation for the twenty-twenty-five Ford Interceptor at our upfitting vendor, KA dash com, Inc., is twenty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-seven, forty-four cents. There were no budgeted funds in the twenty-twenty-five budget for a new police vehicle, and remaining expenses beyond any insurance reimbursements will be paid from the general fund through other operational savings. Mayor, I move the city council approve the purchase of a twenty-twenty-five Ford Interceptor from Shawnee Mission Ford in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand four hundred and six dollars. And the purchase and installation of requi-related equipment from KA dash com, uh, Inc. in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-four cents for a total of seventy-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-four cents.
Second. Motion and second, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Yeah, Debbie?
Question, okay. The insurance company, what the reimbursement is only for the deductible? What 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 requirement does the insurance company have to pay for the vehicle?
No, so they're giving us twelve thousand, they're giving us seventeen thousand dollars for the vehicle. It's a twen-, it was a twenty-eighteen, so it was an older vehicle. Um, and then our deductible is five thousand, so they reduced that seventeen thousand. So we're getting a check from the insurance company for twelve thousand, and we got it already, according to Justin.
Be applied to the
And that'll be applied to the purchase price and then whatever additional the likelihood that we'll get at least our deductible back as well through the subrogation process and potentially some something additional on top of that.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just not clear. So then the person that hit us, we're asking their insurance for money. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And we don't know how much that they will come back with.
No, it's it becomes a kind of a conversation and a battle between the two insurance companies to to figure out responsibility and liability and who pays for what.
And we do have the money in the budget?
Yeah, well, we we will find it in, whether it's in general fund reserves or savings that we realize over the course of this year. It's expensive, and in part because this is a twenty-eighteen, they make enough changes in a twenty-twenty-five model that the equipment that was in the twenty-eighteen, some of it was damaged in the accident, but that that could be salvageable now doesn't fit in the twenty-twenty-five body style, so.
So so if the other insurance company comes through, have we also asked for the equipment cost with that or?
That's part of what they'll be negotiating, right? But the, yes. We'll be optimistic that we might get some of that recovered. Probably unlikely, just based on experience, but originally we thought we wouldn't get any portion back because we believed that the driver was uninsured, the vehicle owner was insured. So there's at least an opportunity to recover at least hopefully our deductible.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Perpinder Davis?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Uh, councilmember Ryard, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on April second and considered six items. The meeting minutes, task order for the twenty-twenty-five bridge inspection and the twenty-twenty-five residential street reconstruction project easements were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. The engineering services task order for twenty-twenty-six residential street reconstruction projects, twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty cars, five-year program, and Operation Greenlight Cooperative Agreement update will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. First item is the engineering services task order for the twenty-twenty-six residential street reconstruction projects. The city strives to dedicate two million annually to the residential street reconstruction program, which is guided by pavement condition index, or PCI, data from Stantex twenty-twenty-two study and previous geotechnical analysis by Olson. To maintain progress with the program, the city tries to complete design one year ahead of construction. The proposed design for the twenty-twenty-six residential street reconstruction program includes full-depth pavement reconstruction along with the replacement of curbs, gutters and driveway approaches and improvements or repairs to stormwater systems specifically targeting to stormwater components with a risk ratings of three point five and five. The task order encompasses all necessary design services for the proposed streets. These services include surveying, data collection, design development, coordination with utility companies, and the creation of any necessary easement documents. Additional provisions cover project meetings, obtaining permits, drafting bid documents and overseeing bid submission and construction. The total cost for these services will not exceed three hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. Mayor, I move the city council approve a task order with Burns and McDonald for engineering design services for twenty-twenty-six residential street reconstruction projects in an amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions?
What is?
Yes, Wanda?
What is the design? What is what is the difference? I mean, between the design and so they're not really going to do work, they're just going to do pictures?
You have to actually design the way the roads, like
So they're they're the construction drawing, so it's actually the engineering. And so it will be all of the survey engineering. Uh, and then they will, um, produce the deliverable in this process will be the design specification, well, the design that will go out to bid, and then the contractors will bid on those, and those are the doc, on those plans, and then those are the plans that will be used to actually construct. And because, uh, the majority, well, really, all of the streets that we are doing our full-depth reconstructions, which means curb to curb, entire street comes out, the base is done, stormwater is, they're they're more expensive than what you might see in just a mill and overlay project or something like that. Yeah, so they're not realigning them. But it is, we have many, the majority of the streets in our community, I would contend, were not built to any certain specifications over time. And so this is ensuring that we have the proper subbase and the folks sitting behind me can probably speak much more eloquently to all of this, but but really bringing them up to specifications that will extend their life for a long period of time.
And the stormwater is also a huge component of that, making sure that the water is running in the right direction when it rains heavily. That's that's a really big thing for Mission.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the vote.
Josie?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Perpinder Davis?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is the twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty Cars Five-Year Program. Through a combination of state gas tax dollars and county general fund revenues, the county assisted road system or Cars Program provides up to fifty percent of construction and construction inspection funding to cities to construct and maintain certain eligible streets. Cities are responsible for cost of design, right-of-way and utility relocation costs. Each year, cities submit a five-year road improvement plan to the county from which projects are selected for funding. Participating cities are required to pass a resolution annually adopting a five-year plan based on their own unique goals and objectives. And Cars projects are ultimately adopted as part of the county's annual budget process. Projects for the twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty program are outlined in the action item summary. Mission will have two projects in twenty-twenty-six, the Johnson Drive Metcalf Avenue to Lamar Avenue and three hundred and ninety-six feet of Fifty First Street as part of larger projects in Roland Park. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution adopting the five-year city county street improvement program for the city of Mission for twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Yeah, Ben, and then Debbie?
Actually, I don't know comments on this item. Go ahead.
Okay, Debbie?
I just want to thank you guys for putting together the design that shows that there's a crosswalk between one side, the south side to the north side of Johnson Drive, east of Riggs, because people have been asking for that for a long time. So it's great to see that in the twenty-twenty-six.
All right, seeing no other hands, uh, Robin, please call the roll.
Josie?
Aye.
Perpinder Davis?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item is Operation Greenlight Cooperative Agreement Update. Operation Greenlight is a regional arterial traffic signal coordination system managed by the Mid-America Regional Council or MARK. The city of Mission has participated in OGL since twenty-ten and is one of the twenty-six participating agencies across the Kansas City metro area. The updated cooperative agreement adds the cost for the newly added intersection of Lamar Avenue and Fox Ridge Drive. In addition, it outlines the roles and key and responsibilities of all participating agencies. Key elements include cost-sharing provisions, information-sharing protocols, insurance requirements, the structure and responsibilities of OGL Committee, the scope of services provided, and requirements for private contractors performing construction work under the program. Mission's annual cost for participation in OGL is three thousand dollars, which covers traffic signal coordination services for intersections on Shawnee Mission Parkway at Roland Drive, Shawnee Mission Parkway at Noll on Shawnee Mission Parkway at Roland Drive, Shawnee Mission Parkway at Knoll Avenue, Shawnee Mission Parkway at Lamar Avenue, shared with Overland Park, and newly added signal at Lamar Avenue and Foxridge Drive. The agreement details costs for both 2025 and 2026 for a total of $6,000 to be invoiced separately in the appropriate calendar year. Funding for this expense is included in the Public Works operating budget. Mayor, I move the City Council approve the cooperative agreement for funding operations of Operation Greenlight, or OGL, with the Mid-America Regional Council, or MARC.
Second. Motion and a second, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Ben, this one?
Yeah, this is the one I meant. I made some noise last time about potentially sort of doubting the, the, the actual greenhouse gas savings of this program. I've done my homework since then. Punchline, I'm going to withdraw my objections. I think there's probably a mild to neutral benefit on greenhouse gas emissions. And most of the other problems I have with, with these intersections frankly are to do with infrastructure and things that really aren't impacted by this. So I'm just going to be mildly in support of this.
Any other council comments or questions?
How can we follow that?
Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
So does mildly supportive still be yes?
We'll find out here in a second.
Yes, that is the, that is the legal impact, yes.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Yeah.
Aye.
Hayden Chompsey?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report. All right, thank you. And I would recommend, because I know we have someone waiting out in the audience, if we could move my report up to the next piece of business, all right? Thank you all. So this evening, we do have one new appointment to consider for the Sustainability Commission. So tonight, I put before you the appointment of James, James Robbins, Ward Two, with the term expiring December 31st, 2026, to the Sustainability Commission. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I, Mayor, I move City Council uphold the appointment of James Robbins with the term expiring December 31st, 2026 for the Sustainability Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any council discussion on this item? We do have James in the audience here tonight. James, if you want to say anything, or if you just want to wave, you can, it's your, your election. But if you want to say anything, feel free to come up to the podium if you want to say hi, but.
Sure. Yeah, James Robbins alone. I'm honored to be here, I love the community. Moved here in October with my wife, and we've, we've been all over the country. And instantly, this community stood out. You know, it's the people on the street, the friendly faces, the walking distance to Johnson Avenue. You could tell it's deliberate, right? Nothing just kind of happens, it's, it's from the deliberate work of, of everybody here, you know, the residents. I'm honored to be here and I very much love to be a part of the decision-making in any way possible that I can be, so.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, yeah, Debbie?
I just want to mention, the Mission Sustainability Commission is renowned and known throughout the country because we go through the National League of Cities every year, and I take examples and things that they, they weigh in on, on the redevelopment projects across the board. And so we have people that have copied some of the things that our Sustainability Commission stands for. And so you'll be in welcome hands with that group, that's awesome and blessed and the brightest.
All right, great. Robin, will you please call the roll?
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hayden Chompsey?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Welcome. Yes, feel, feel free to stay or leave as you see fit, but we do not have any unfinished business tonight. So we'll move on to our new business. We have two items of new business, the first is election of a new council president and vice president. These positions are elected in April of odd-numbered years, so those elected tonight will hold the position until April 2027. We had a little bit of interesting term with our, our term pieces here because we had a council member leave, so that's why we're back doing this again, we're now on our regular schedule. So we will begin with the election of our council president. I would now open the floor to nominations for council president.
Mayor, I nominate Ben Choji for the position of City Council President to fulfill the term expiring April 2027.
Second. Right, do we?
Aye, second.
Perfect. Any other nominations? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Chompsey?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we will now take nominations for council vice president. I would open the floor for nominations for council vice president.
Mayor, I nominate Mary Ryer for the position of City Council Vice President to fulfill the term expiring April 2027.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, do we have any other nominations for council vice president? Everyone's very excited. All right, hearing no other nominations, Robin, please call the roll.
Put a second in by all.
We need a vote.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hayden Chompsey?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. Our next item is maybe not quite so fun. Our second item of new business is for consideration of e-bike grant funding. Laura, can you please provide a report? Uh, we'll see.
Okay, we'll see. Well, thank you, I, we put this on as a new business item. We don't actually need you to take any formal action tonight, but we at least wanted to get it out in front of you. We will be coming back later this month with a little bit of additional detail. So I think everybody knows we applied and were awarded a grant. We were the lead agency in partnership with Roland Park to secure 50 e-bikes and the associated hubs for location, 30 bikes here in Mission and 20 bikes in Roland Park. After, we, we submitted for that grant because as we researched it with BikeWalk KC and the Mid-America Regional Council, we were advised that the grant dollars, which is uncommon, would be available to cover both capital expenses and operation, or operating and maintenance costs. And we had very specific conversations at the outset and prior to submission of the grant because we knew that the ongoing operating and maintenance cost would be the challenging piece for us. And so with the majority of those costs being supported, it was a five-year, so the grant was for the capital equipment and five years of operations and maintenance. We felt that that would give us kind of the runway or ample opportunity to go out and solicit the sponsorships or identify ongoing and sustainable funding sources to keep the e-bikes in operation here in the community. Upon the grant award, we began working with KDOT on the grant agreement and some of the technical pieces to, that happen with everything associated with grants. And we were advised that the operations and maintenance costs were not going to be eligible expenses under the grant. There was a similar project on the Missouri side, a partnership with BikeWalk KC in the city of North Kansas City. Originally, the Missouri Department of Transportation was allowing them to proceed, and then they brought that to screeching halt. So they told both of us, operations and maintenance aren't eligible. So we spent a lot of time, and Stephanie did a fantastic job, I'm sorry, Director Boyce, I should say, in engaging BikeWalk KC, Mark staff, Roland Park was involved in conversations, really trying to explore every option that we had and opportunity to, to look at how we might cover those costs. What we ultimately decided to do, and I think we discussed this last year, was that we, we requested that, that Mark move the project from the current fiscal year, fiscal year '24, to fiscal year '25, so that we would have a little bit more time to see if we couldn't continue to find some way to get the operations and maintenance costs covered. Mark had asked for a status update because in fiscal year '25, all of those projects have to be obligated by September of this year, and that's sort of rapidly approaching. So they were asking for a status update from all the grant recipients. Neither, like as I mentioned, neither Mission or BikeWalk North Kansas City have been able to find a way to get those costs covered. City of North Kansas City recently decided to accept the capital funding only, purchase the bikes, and then they will, they made a commitment to look for and secure the operations, maintenance, funding in their next fiscal year budget. In the state of Missouri, each city gets to set their fiscal year however they would like. They're not all on a calendar year like we are. And so North Kansas City's fiscal year, actually, their new fiscal year begins in October. So there's not particularly long laps, and they have some amazing things like casino revenues that come into, into their community. Roland Park has indicated pretty consistently to us that without the operations and maintenance funding, they don't feel like they can proceed with the project. And Mark has advised us that if they make that determination, depending on what we decide to do, that it wouldn't jeopardize our ability to proceed with 30 bikes and not the 50 in total. So as we've kind of talked about it and researched it, staff feels like we have two options. The first, we can just decline the grant funding entirely, turn that back at this point. The estimated annual operating costs for 30 bikes ranges from about $48,000 to $56,000 a year, and that was an escalation over five years of operating cost. So even if we can secure significant fare box revenues, which you may remember a story in the not-too-distant past that JCPRD actually took e-bikes out of service in their parks and facilities because they were not generating the fares that had been estimated. So even if we were to proceed and get fare box revenues, we would still need to come out of pocket over that five-year period somewhere between 200 and, 129,000 and $200,000. We think that the opportunity to secure sponsorships in, in the future is good, but we haven't had the time to present that. We've talked at length, somewhat at length, with BikeWalk KC, and we've investigated their typical sponsorship packages that they would present. So I think we would have a plan to move that forward. I think with the redevelopment that we're seeing in our community, that e-bikes could really be popular, whether that's traveling just within our city limits or outside to other areas. However, we really do feel like we need more time to market, secure those sponsorships, and budget appropriately for any other remaining subsidy. The typical sponsorship for an entire hub under the BikeWalk KC structure is about $10,000, and that's a three-year partnership. So even that sponsorship right now is not designed to cover 100% of the operating cost. I think also, we've tried to factor in the construction that's going to be occurring in 2026 along the Rock Creek Channel and Johnson Drive, as well as for, along Martway for Phase Two of the lanes, which you just approved earlier this evening. The Mission Mart improvements and potentially improvements to the Wild Oats building. And I think, we're not sure we would have a very bikeable community in 2026. And I think the ability to secure the sponsors without being able to sell that benefit really immediately, it probably puts us at a disadvantage. So option one is, we just say to Mark, we tried, we really thought we could make this work, but kind of this switch in, you know, finding out at the last minute that operations and maintenance were not going to be covered, we, we can't manage that. Option two would be to take a similar path as North Kansas City, and that would be to accept the grant funding for the bikes and the hubs, so the capital side of that, and then defer installation until some later date when we could secure the operating expenses. I have some concerns, and again, this is what we'll cover in more detail. We have, we'll have a budget, a first budget work session on April 30th, so later this month, where I can have a little bit more time to sort of at least begin to introduce some of the challenges I think we're already going to be facing in the 2026 budget. And I'm not sure, we haven't had a really clear definition of how long KDOT would allow us to not put the bikes, you know, into service. So at this point, we feel, from a staff perspective, we feel that option one is probably would be our recommended approach, but in sharing this information with the mayor, she thought it was important to bring it and have the conversation with the full council and to really just take that look together at our budget in, into the future. Because I do think that, from all the conversations that we've had, that the e-bikes and being able to promote that in our community is also a priority. So again, no decision for you to make this evening, and you could have some discussion, or I know that, that this is a lot, or I wanted to give you plenty of time because I didn't want to spring on a work session, hey, we have this idea. So now you have a couple of weeks, happy to provide, send out kind of my written notes that, to allow you that opportunity. But not, again, not, not a fun decision tonight.
Do we have any questions for Laura, for our initial mulling this over? Yeah, Joseph, Leah, Debbie?
The whole, the whole group of us. I have a, a quick, just like to help balance the decision. Like, if we did decline the funds now, what impact does that have on their willingness to give us those funds when we are more ready?
Um, I think it's the availability, I don't think it's willingness. I think it's just going to be availability of the, of funds.
Okay, makes sense.
And I think, I think it's difficult to predict right now because every grant program is receiving so much scrutiny and things are being changed and altered. And so it's hard to predict what will be available and what it will be available for in the future.
Yeah, Leah?
Could we take less bikes?
Well, I think one of the things when we engage in the conversation with BikeWalk KC at the outset of the grant application is you need, in, in order for you to maximize kind of the efficiency and effectiveness of your program, you need to have sort of a critical mass. And I think we have talked with BikeWalk KC, if I'm remembering the conversation. They find 30 is still, I think 30 would be fine. So if we lose the 20 in Roland Park, I think that would still create the opportunity for us. Now, again, all of this was happening, we already had negotiated several development agreements. It may be something that we want to consider in the future as we have other developments or developers that approach us. I have talked with Bond Council, the, it's not a TIF-eligible expense, but it could potentially be CID-eligible expense or some other thing. So I think that, and we've also had some of the Johnson Drive businesses, particularly across from the market site, who have actually reached out directly to BikeWalk KC to explore the option of sponsorship, excuse me, in bringing the hubs. So I think 30 would still be a reasonable critical mass where I, at least from BikeWalk KC's perspective, that it would make sense.
Well, what about 20? I mean, if 20 worked for Roland Park?
Well, 20 worked for Roland Park, I think primarily because our 30 were connected to that. So we can certainly ask them as we continue to explore these options. But I think 30, just in terms of, at least particularly our plan of how we wanted to stretch them out along the corridor and/or connect them to transit opportunities, the 30 made, the, you know, three hubs with 10 bikes in each hub made, made sense.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Debbie?
Was there any contingency language in the grant itself that stated, once you've got to X, you have to X amount of time to implement?
Um, no, but they like to have the projects obligated and as, completed as much in one particular fiscal year as, as you possibly can. So again, those are just kind of the things that we're exploring. I think the September letting date or obligation date snuck up on us a little bit. We've been in pretty constant conversation with Roland Park and BikeWalk KC, but.
Yeah, Mary?
It's kind of a weird question, I guess, but is there any concern or indication that this could negatively, like if we don't take it, would there be some sort of, with the other entities, like a negative reaction to us not taking it after kind of like working with that? Does that make sense?
I don't think so. If the, the, and Stephanie probably knows this, but I don't have this off the top of my head. The, the lion's share of the grant funds that were obligated were, were going to cover the five-year operations and maintenance cost. So the capital piece is really, in the grand scheme of things, kind of the smaller portion of that. There are still, the, so if we return funds or a portion of the funds, that's going to go back into a pot, and there are other projects that will likely benefit from that. So we're not really keeping others from their projects or future projects.
And same thing like with, you know, we've worked with BikeWalk KC on multiple things there. We don't think they'll be angry because they knew all along that we needed both pieces funded, right?
Yes, I mean, they're in the same boat, right? They're in the same boat, they're just in partnership with their project in North. Yes, I mean, they're in the same boat, right? They're in the same boat. They're just in partnership with, uh, their project in North Kansas City. They have, I think, some more flexibility in funding. I think Councilmember Juan had a question.
I guess my question is, is that even if we bought the bikes and then in the future thought we could, you know, with, with the way that technology changes so quickly, there's no guarantee that those bikes will be used in the future for, so I guess my comment would be that we should return the funds because we don't have a real plan as to what, to take care of those other fees. That's, that would be my thoughts.
I think the mayor asked me some of those very same questions this afternoon. Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, I mean, I, I ride my bike a lot, and, and so just reacting to this, um, that's a lot of money to operate a program out of our, out of our budget and without knowing where we're going to, going to get the money from. Um, you know, that's a big chunk of money. And, and really the, I think it would, it was made to work by the availability of grant funds. Um, but it's, it's kind of a narrow, narrow application of, of funds and effort to sort of our overall bike and pedestrian and climate goals. So I'm kind of inclined to think that we could probably do better, identifying ways to just support bike and pedestrian infrastructure than have this open-ended question of how we're going to fund this fairly large new hole in the project, so.
I mean, if you're ready to tell me that tonight, we can communicate that, or if we want to talk about it some more. I just didn't, I think we didn't know.
You didn't want to surprise everyone and then say you had to decide tonight, so we're happy to take the time to the thirtieth, or is everyone feel consensus along those lines tonight? We don't have to have a formal action, right, Laura, on this?
Yeah.
I would take, always take the time if we have it personally.
So everyone can mull and.
Yeah.
Okay. Sign at the April thirtieth.
Well, and I think that's important, only because, uh, there's at least one council member who hasn't seen any of the previous priorities and sort of needs and wants lists. Um, and it helps to put that in perspective. So thank you again for the time. I'll share this out. Uh, and then we'll be prepared to discuss it on the thirtieth.
Thank you, Laura. All right, we will now move into comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone have, on council, have something they'd like to share this month? Yes.
So, uh, Ward Three has its, uh, quarterly meeting at, uh, the Powell Community Center tomorrow, is Thursday, tomorrow at, uh, seven o'clock PM. As always, anybody who's listening, um, if you're in Ward Three, please come. We'd love to talk to you and hear what's on your mind.
Great. Yeah, Debbie?
I just want to make a comment. You know, we have such awesome departments, but last week we had, uh, an event with a young man that was going to Smoothie King on the corner of Johnson Drive and Riggs, and he had his little brother with him. It was a young man that's autistic and non-verbal. We got an alert on our phone from Johnson County that there's a, a child missing. So I, I live three houses down, so we went outside and cars are lined up and down the street trying to go find the little boy, and the police did an outstanding job. They just have a calming sense about them when there's things chaotic going on. They were running up and down the street, all around the corners and huffing and puffing because they were really concerned to find this young man who couldn't verbalize. So anyway, I just want to point out what a great job they did and how lucky and fortunate we are to have such calming, capable and competent police. Thanks.
Uh, and I would say similar to that, too, we did also have a fire this week in our community at Apollo Gardens, and I know the police department responded to that and also Consolidated Fire District Two, and just big thank you to both departments on, on that response as well. Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, I just had another announcement. Um, so the Ward Four meeting is Thursday, April twenty-fourth at seven PM at the Powell Community Center. So we look forward to seeing anybody who can make it for the Ward Four meeting. Thank you.
Joseph?
I had, in addition to the thanks, uh, for the, the fire response, also I had a couple, three constituents who got really upset about some detour signs and Public Works was really fast to fix them, and I was able to, like, the next morning, uh, reach out and tell everyone everything was going to be handled, and that was, uh, really appreciated. So thank you all for that.
All right, any other council comments? Seeing none, we will move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of our boards, commissions and committees. First is council members Loudon and Hayden Chompousi for the Sustainability Commission.
I took notes. Um, so we talked about the, uh, climate summit, which was really enjoyable and incredibly well, uh, attended by Mission once again. So I appreciate everyone who was able to take time out of their Saturday to go to that. We also, uh, talked about a, a, a new not-for-profit, well, I guess it's not new, she's been around for a little while. It's called We're Useful. And the goal of this not-for-profit is to keep things out of the landfill by repairing or donating. She does five events a year. Um, and they include like sewing, um, small appliance repair, jewelry repair, computer repair. Um, she does pop-ups, um, and she's going to come to our, uh, Go Green Climate, um, Beer Cafe. Yeah, yeah. Next, next fall. So that's very, very exciting. Um, let's see. Uh, the, the Sustainability Commission is going to table at the Mission Market as often as they possibly can. Yeah.
That's about all I've got. Do you remember anything else?
Oh, yes, it ordered lots of batteries. And the beautiful thing is that we have found a, a company that will take our batteries for significantly less expense. So that's been very exciting. Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that concludes my report.
Perfect. Next is our council members Kring and Schmidt for Parks Recreation and Tree Commission. Looks like Brian's up.
I think it's me, yes. Um, so we had a few things pop up. I was just confirming the date of one of them. Um, upcoming, uh, this Saturday on the nineteenth, we do have the Bunny Extravaganza at Broadmoor Park that the, uh, committee's been, uh, hard at work prepping for. Um, so particularly if you've got young kids who are into that kind of thing, it's a great, uh, great opportunity for them. Um, you saw the, for a poster presentation earlier today, so always exciting, uh, when, when a resident has that kind of recognition. So congratulations again to Cora. Uh, and we did, uh, I think last time I had brought up, uh, a champion tree winner that was signed at Pearl Harbor Park. Um, so that sign's been, been up now, so that is exciting. Um, what else am I missing?
Do we have a backup plan for the Bunny Extravaganza if it rains? It's supposed to rain.
Yes, we all trust meteorologists, right? So if we, if it gets really bad weather, uh, we will bring pop-up tents, um, if it's just sprinkling, but if it gets really bad, we do have a contingency plan to use the north gym of the Powell Community Center. Yeah, and we'll update the Rain Out hotline.
All right, anything else on that one?
That was all for me.
All right. And next we'll hear an update from council members, where I heard it in Josie on Mission Magazine Editorial Board.
Yeah, due to a meeting postponement, we, the, the board has not met since our last report.
However, if you know of any music-themed story ideas, please send them our direction. We are uh, currently working on trying to pull together a list of potential story ideas. So, and if you should have received the last issue of the Mission Magazine, which is getting, I think, great reviews out there, always fun to see it in print.
I did see Prairie Sailor highlighted it in their email mailing, Mission Magazine piece. And yeah, sent a couple musicians your way, so I think the community is excited about that. All right, next is Councilmember Carpenter Davis with Family Adoption Committee.
We have not met since, uh, our last meeting either. Thank you.
All right. And we had moved up my appointment, so we covered that already. Thank you. And then Laura, do you have any other items you'd like to share with the council tonight?
Good evening. Um, I have one business update, and that is an exciting one. Friday, we will host the grand, or we will attend the grand opening of Popeyes on Thompson Drive, um, at eleven o'clock. Mayor Flora will be giving some remarks, and I know several of you will be in attendance. So if you have an RSVPed and you want to come, I think that there's room for more, so let me know. Um, other than that, please remember that citywide cleanup is April twenty-sixth at Beverly Park. Um, our Rain Out date is May third. We're keeping our fingers crossed we don't need it. Uh, right now it's not looking great, but it's well from now. Um, if you would like to participate in the council group and you haven't emailed me, please let me know, and I'll be happy to add you to that. Um, if you would like to share that with your neighbors or your friends or your neighborhood group or your walking group or anyone else, please do. The more the merrier. Um, we'll have hats this year for our participants. They look pretty great. Um, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. Uh, we don't have interim financials, uh, this month because we have been uh, deep in the audit. The auditors were here for their site visit, uh, last week. Uh, thanks to Christine Corrith, and we'll give more kudos, but I think things went very smoothly thanks to, um, her preparation and that of, uh, our accountant and, um, uh, folks really throughout the organization. It becomes a team effort. So we'll come back with two months' worth of interim financials, uh, at your next meeting. Uh, it was a pleasure to be able to celebrate the ribbon cutting at the Lanes, uh, last week and have a chance to tour that facility, uh, and really, um, hear the nice things that the developer had to say about working with the city council, um, to make, bring that project to fruition. Um, and then the last thing is, we've talked about it just a little bit, but we are, we'll have our first budget work session on April thirtieth. I don't know the time yet because we are also potentially contemplating a special meeting. At the committee meeting, we talked about some of the challenges that the Millhouse project is facing currently, and the council gave some direction on, uh, maybe some of the, um, ideas that you were supportive of. So we are busy working through and chasing all of those down. Uh, but, um, Millhouse is hopeful that they, in order to kind of keep it on the schedule that they would like to be on, they need to advise Water One by May first if, uh, they're going to proceed with the water line relocation so that everybody can get the resources aligned. So I, I don't know the time, but the likelihood that we're going to have the special meeting to at least discuss, uh, amendments to that development agreement, um, is pretty great at this point. And that's all I have this evening.
Yeah, Debbie?
Question. Could you remind us when the market opens, please?
The market opens on June fifth, right?
The market opens on June fifth. It's going well. If, um, Carpenter's coming back and, um, some great Market Day sponsors and those community tents that the Sustainability Commission loves to, to sit at. So I think it'll be a really great season.
Excellent. Yeah, Leah?
So does Water One not feel an obligation to put some money into the kiddie beans so they couldn't find their own lines?
Well, they, not, that's not typically how they operate, but we're, um, working on some conversations that maybe underscore the fact that this might be the oldest line in their system or one of the oldest lines in their system. Um, so we'll see. Uh, we're, we're, trust me, we are turning over every stone possible to see if we can't, um, bring this across the finish line.
Because one of their other oldest lines was the one that burst and flooded Outlook, correct?
Yes.
It just seems like they should feel some sort of obligation here.
We're, we're trying.
We're trying. Um, I did want to mention, we did have our new permit technician that started today. So when you see, if you're in City Hall during the day and you see a new face sitting at the front counter, please to welcome, uh, Lauren. And then our building official uh, is starting April twenty-eighth. Uh, so we're excited. And then, uh, Brian coordinated, uh, interviews for the city planners position last week, and so we're, that's moving along as well. So we hope to be back to full staffing levels and community development, um, very soon.
Excellent.
Oh, yes. And so Mission Vale, uh, has received their certi- the townhomes, um, they're at Fifty-Eight Terrace and Knoll, uh, have received their certificate of occupancy, and they're starting leasing and, um, the developer builder reached out to Brian and, um, asked if the council would be interested in touring a unit and just getting a peek. And I think he's coordinated that it won't be fancy like the Lanes, and that's okay. But five o'clock next Thursday, April twenty-fourth is what he has offered if that works with, uh, schedules. So we'll follow up, uh, with that as well. And then also at your places, there was something that, asking you to kind of what your preference is for the July meeting. Uh, because I'd always, our committee meetings always fall close to the July Fourth holiday. So if, if you have a chance to complete that and leave it at your place or drop it with me before you leave, that would be great. And then we'll try to get the, I'm working to finalize the budget calendar so we can get that out to everybody. That, I think, is, did I forget anything else? Okay.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Laura. Uh, we do not have a need for an executive session this evening, so before we adjourn tonight, I just want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned.